Okay, welcome back. Had a great break and thanks to Gina Guthrie as always for providing us with a snack. Next up, we're going to go into the capital improvement plan. And Erica and Jonathan both, I guess, are going to help with that one.
In front of you, and I've also provided you with slides in front of you. But as an overview, our five-year CIP totals $13.4 million, $13,457,000. Of that, 29% or close to 30% will be paid through cash, excuse me, will be paid through debt. And the remainder amount, 70%, will be paid through cash sources. For the current year, or for the FY13 year, sorry, I've been working with FY13 since January, so it seems like my current year. You have before you the list of recommended projects, which total $2.8 million, $2,822,000. Those projects include a courthouse chiller at $135,000, pre-cash ceiling and caulking for multiple government buildings at $240,000. HVAC replacement at the arena for $1 million. Roof replacement at the arena will continue at $52,000 for FY13. Camp Spencer is recommended to begin architecture for changes to occur at buildings there. That expense for FY13 is for the architecture expense at $75,000. The human service building HVAC is recommended for funding at $100,000. The next two lines for capital outlay for schools and Rowan Cabarrus Community College are as discussed previously. The schools at $1,120,000 and then RCCC at $100,000. This is the amount that's been, we've discussed when we talked about schools, school overviews. For a total of $2,822,000. Those funding sources for the FY13 fiscal year, the general fund will fund, will provide funding at $1,220,000. And the remainder of the funding for the remainder of the projects will come from the capital reserve fund at $1.6 million. Did you want to highlight some of the projects? Or are there any questions about any of the projects?
I was just going to ask if you had any questions about any of these projects or needed more specifics on them. This is, of course, as Erica said, we're looking five years out at major expenditures. We're actually five years and beyond because we have some that show beyond years in terms that really don't. They've been identified as a major expenditure in the future, but they haven't been assigned to one of those years. We show them in the out years. But these are the ones that have been identified and then with this budget will rotate in to be performed.
Didn't we have some roof replacement at the arena last year?
There's, it's ongoing.
Pam, do you have, should be page 56.
It was a two- or three-year phase project.
Yeah. For the current year, there's $96,800 budgeted for FY12 year for arena roof replacement. So it's a multi-year project.
Okay. This is showing it up there. You can see that we already have some in the budget for this current year and then the next year, or the proposed budget.
What about the HVAC system? Is it just aged out?
It is. Again, you can see that it gives the explanation of it, that the current equipment was installed when we constructed the building 10 years ago.
Okay.
So it is aging. We've been doing major repairs to it and we've actually this year had to do some pretty large-scale replacement of parts. It's just time to replace good pieces of that.
One thing you won't find on this list is any projects for Cabarrus County Schools or Conaples City Schools. And you will find for Rowan Cabarrus Community College, a building in the beyond year. I've recently requested information for them to submit to me. I have Conaples City Schools and Rowan Cabarrus Community College, but I'm still waiting on Cabarrus County Schools. And then we will have some projects that they have listed that they have specific needs for in the near future that can be addressed with Mr. Downs' comments about some fund balance or any other ways that we want to address it. But they were not available when the CIP plan were put together.
Earlier in the presentation, you noted, or Erica noted, that they had requested $480,000, I believe, in total capital for Rowan Cabarrus. And it's only recommended at 100, but the other 380 were for additional renovations and changes at the existing campus. And I don't know if the manager wants to address those.
Yeah, as Mr. Washington, looking back at your fund balance right now, right now there's somewhere in the neighborhood, a little over $9 million of unassigned fund balance that's out there that's available to you to use. I don't recommend, I would recommend somewhere between four and five. I would leave the other four there for emergencies. But, so there are some projects that all three school systems are going to come to you with, with some one-time money. It wouldn't be built into the operating budget. It would be something that you could do if you think it's a priority and just pay with it was directly from fund balance.
Are these going to be any of the projects that they took off the QSCAB list?
We have not seen the list yet.
Okay.
The only one we have seen is from RCCC. It's for a total of about $380,000. I'm sure Dr. Spalding will explain in more detail, but it would be to remodel their cafeteria. Their enrollment has grown so much that they can't eat in the same location and prepare their food. So they need an additional 3,000 square feet there and then also remodel an additional 4,000 to create some additional classroom space that's being eaten up pretty quickly out there.
Conaples will have, at least there are two or three projects. Will Crabtree spoke to you last night at the board meeting and indicated that he was not able to fund two or three of his projects because of the bids that came in. Two or three of those are on his list. Because I think his roofing project came in over budget and another one, but I asked them to put anything on there that they needed improved or taken care of so that you would have something to review and look through. But he would be able to indicate which ones they are. And I've asked them to prioritize them from their perspective also.
And we'll have that for Thursday?
If I get from Cabarrus County Schools the information I requested, yes.
Well, we'll definitely would have Rowan Cabarrus and Conaples City on Thursday.
Yes.
And then if Cabarrus County has anything for us, then that would be available for us to consider.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
But if they don't turn it in, we won't have, there's no way for us to consider something if we don't get the request.
Right. I'll go ahead and email the other two out to you tomorrow morning. So you'll have any advance.
That would be helpful.
Just to highlight some new projects that have been added to the CIP, they're not recommended for funding for the current year, but there are five new projects that are on the plan that weren't in previous plans. They are for planning, most of them are out in planning years beyond. The courthouse expansion or relocation, we put that on the, in the plan, so it'll be on the horizon. It is for planning year beyond. It is not within the next five years. Also, chiller replacement here at the governmental center. That's a new project that has not been on the previous CIPs. And three projects for the arena, arena event center entrance, a marquee replacement and sign enhancement, and paving the front overflow lot. Those are three new capital project requests from the arena and they are scheduled for planning, or requested for planning year 2016.
Yeah. Those are in five years and beyond simply because we're still, we haven't prioritized them yet and there's also, there's no funding available. So we're still looking at those. But those are just some suggestions that have been passed on from the arena staff.
Any questions on the capital improvement plan? That concludes my portion of the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we are happy to have our sheriff and chief deputy to join us to talk about the sheriff's budget. You had perfect timing.
Yeah.
Erica's been keeping us pretty good on schedule too, so.
Forgive me if I have to move things around because I think we've got several things to discuss here, so I had to bring enough information for you. I guess we'll start at, with the sheriff's budget. Is that where you want to start at, Mike? All right. What I'll do with the sheriff's budget naturally, I'll just hit the high spots, I mean, based off of last year's budgets. Within our budget, we have three different budgets. The first one being sheriff's, then animal control and jail. I'll go through the sheriff's budget, 2110 first, just kind of hit some highlights of things that have changed. If it stayed the same or reduced and it wasn't significant, then I won't touch on it unless you have a question. Some of the notes that I made in the 2110 budget, 9331, which is a detailed account, so you have an opportunity to look at each of those requests that are there. It's up a little bit this year. In the past budgets, again, these are detailed. You can go in and see, this is one of the areas that we have cut in the past, places where we've, you know, gone and taken out of the last couple of budgets. So they continue to request those in this budget. These were ones that we felt like were very necessary in this budget. But there was a $50,000 increase in that detailed budget there for 9331. Moving down to fuel, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We don't have any control over what the fuel prices are. Naturally, we try to do all we can to encourage our folks to conserve as much fuel as possible when they can, but at the same time, there's a, there's a balance there in, we don't want a reduction in their services or a reduction in their visibility in the community, so we do the best that we can there. But anyway, that's a $50,000 increase and that's based solely on what we saw miles driven this year, our shortfall of fuel this year and anticipation that fuel prices will continue to increase like they have the last few months. Moving down to 9570, which is also a detail in that budget, there was an increase of $275,000 for 800 megahertz maintenance agreement, which is our new radio system that we're a part of. And again, that's a, that's a whole project in itself. But again, I wanted to point that out because that was a significant increase. 9860 vehicles, the only difference this year, same number of vehicles we're requesting. We're on a maintenance of about 10 vehicles per year, which is pretty good, maintaining anywhere from 90 to 100 fleet vehicles at 100, 100-plus thousand. For those of you that are fairly new, it was determined years ago that those patrol vehicles, the way they're driven, the way they're used, and the way they're depended upon, once they get over 100,000 miles, not only do they start breaking down some, but we start getting more maintenance requests from them. So that was a, that was kind of a determination that the garage helped us use to turn those in. So we did a pretty good job. The request this year, again, it was up 10,000 and that was $1,000 per vehicle. We found it 25,000 per vehicle. It was significant to purchase the vehicle, but there are other things that come in once the new vehicles are here that are not taken into account, just little things that need to be done to each of those. So again, we had a shortfall there. So again, there's an extra thousand per car that was put in, making that 26,000 per car. Overall, for that particular budget, we had an increase, and again, I just pointed out why those, and where those increases were. But overall, from last year, comparing last year to this year, the total operations was 135, 134,000 and some change increase. And taking in salaries and all for that particular budget, it was a $512,000 increase in that particular budget alone. Any questions for that portion?
Red, are you, I know at least one county that's done it, have y'all been looking at the new Ford police interceptor car?
We've got some of them.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
We've got six at the garage and we're going to pick the other four up tomorrow.
Great, okay.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, some, again, we were put in a dilemma. We talked about this a little bit in the last budget, but Ford has continued to tell us over years that they were going to do away with the Crown VIX, which were the interceptors. And, you know, we had no reason to believe that. We've been hearing that for years. But this year, they really did go away from it. And it took them a while to get it right. They were going to go to the Taurus and then they had enough complaints from law enforcement that they wanted more of that Crown Vic. So they did a hybrid and called it the Ford Interceptor. So it was compatible, at least they've been telling us that our cages and some of our equipment, at least going back to, what, '07, was compatible to that. So we felt like that was the best move for us to stick to things that we could continue using off our old cars into those. So that was one of the reasons that we went to the interceptor.
Has anybody driven them yet?
We drove them from the lot.
Oh, okay.
To here, but they're out at the garage.
I understand they handle different, handle different than the old Crown VIX.
They're all-wheel drive. We got the all-wheel drive version and handling and everything's supposed to be so much better.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm saying, just Reed, I haven't ridden one yet. In fact, I make all you guys up.
One of the good things is, Chief and Dennis out at the garage went to a fleet conference this year for that purpose alone, is just to try to evaluate exactly what was our best bang for our buck. They did a fantastic job of coming back with a lot of information. And again, I thought it was very helpful for the garage manager to go out there with us because they work on them. They see, they know more about those vehicles than we do. And they came back recommending this interceptor as well.
All right. Hold on. Sheriff, while you're in this budget here, talk about, you had requested several positions just based on needs and previous studies, but we're recommending the crime scene investigator. Will you talk about that and why you prioritize that as one of the most important?
Yeah, and again, I've said this every budget, we have a tremendous working relationship with the staff and the manager, always have. We always have the ability to get in rooms and talk about things and try to work together towards common goals. And I did mention to them that, you know, again, I would just briefly mention this staffing analysis because it was done, it was paid for, and at some point, we do need to get on track with it. It was part of your packet. And again, I just keep updating it as a three-year plan because we have to make up those differences at some point. But they were very kind in coming to us, understanding for the last two or three years, our need for a crime scene officer. And again, you've got all the information there in front of you for that request, but I'm pleased that Pam and Mike and Jonathan all understood that, you know, I'll just give you an example. Last week, we had a call out on Gregory and it came in at 5:05, 5:10 in the afternoon after our crime scene officer naturally was working. He's the only crime scene officer and he worked all day doing his regular job. And then at 5:10, he was called out again. Now, again, he didn't, he didn't get out there until a little bit later to do his job, but he was out till 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And then, of course, the next day, he has to be back at work. And if he got another crime scene, then we're inundated. And we have people that are cross-trained and able to do that, but you're basically taking your finger out of this hole in the canoe and sticking it in another hole in the canoe when you do that. And we've been doing that for a while. We did work with the staff, again, a couple of years ago at working out the possibility of having a sex offender registry officer half doing that and half doing the other. And of course, the state threw us a curve ball and mandated some more checks on sex offenders, which I thought was a good idea, but it was just unfunded. And it was a mandate put on our people that inundated. And with 200-plus sex offenders registered and having two accountabilities for them a year and having to do now, they've even mandated further if they, if they work in your county but live in a different county, there has to be some communication there, which again, I think is wonderful. But it is more than a full-time job just to do sex offenders. So we've never been able to utilize any of that position towards this crime scene because of that. And so this has been very tremendous for us to be able to add this person. And I think it really, really will help us avoid potential liability. Just a homicide alone, unfortunately, we get a couple of those every so often. And just one of those alone could take one crime scene officer plus all the other investigators 32 hours, 36 hours processing, going, reviewing autopsy, doing all of their measurements, doing all the things that they have to do to process that crime scene within that first 24 to 48 hours. So it's very taxing. Any questions?
Red, I did notice in the, and we've just talked about the retreat and stuff too, but are we seeing, are we pretty much going to see, it's going to pretty much be a wash as far as our expenditures and what we'll get back from the DNC in regards to the convention? Or are we going to see expenditure of public money for the convention?
It all depends.
It's hard to ask right now, I know.
It all depends on what happens. I mean, naturally, our biggest responsibility right now is the jail, you know, for that first event. If for some reason or another we were to, you know, to have to accommodate extra space, naturally, that's, that's an event that we don't normally anticipate. And if we were to get a heightened number of those, then we have to have a number of folks that are prepared to do whatever, from booking to doing video visitation, to busing, to all kinds of different things that go into that. So we wouldn't know. We will be prepared for that. And that's why we talked a little bit about setting some money aside in case that would happen, then we got that money aside. Now, to directly answer your question, we have dedicated a number of folks to assist and to be trained and to get equipment and do those things with the DNC in correlation with us getting help back from them as well. And those folks will be reimbursed to a point that we will actually probably bring back a little bit more money that would accommodate some folks to be on call and do some things here. So yes, I think just for not anticipating that there would be anything outside of the norm, everything should be covered.
Yeah, I know that. I know this where Charlotte sent some folks to Chicago this past weekend. Did we see anybody involved in that at all?
No, we didn't because again, you know, our, at this, at this juncture, without going into a whole lot of detail, the sheriff's office function at the Speedway event is probably going to be minimal, other than certain things that we may be doing.
Okay.
A lot of that was civil disturbance training and visibility and trying to learn that side of it. And again, Charlotte, I think was, it was a dual role for them. They had an opportunity to go see what, you know, what it looks like. And I think they also needed their help. I think they also requested, Chicago requested their help too. So it was a double-edged sword for them where, I know Concord went out and again, Concord has a primary responsibility with that first event. So I think that that was helpful. I don't know how much, I mean, it would have done us a little bit of good, but I think that we need to be communicating more with the folks that were housing large numbers of inmates and how they handled that as opposed to the actual civil disturbance. All right. Moving right along into the jail budget, I'll do the same thing with it, just kind of highlight any changes or things that I see were different from last year. And if you've got any questions, feel free to ask that. This one's pretty basic in the sense that there's not a whole lot of change, other than naturally in our contract services, inmate healthcare and inmate food services, that's contracted out. So we, from time to time, see changes. And I'll talk about the food. We've had Airmark for a number of years now, for all the years that we've contracted food services. We used to run that service ourself years ago and it was a very, very daunting task. Airmark has done a pretty good job with it. The chief and I sat down with them this year and without going into a lot of detail, felt like that we should, it was time in this economy. During this time, I felt like it was a little bit high. And so we went out and put some requests out for other vendors. With that being said, we were able to sit down with Airmark also. I mean, naturally, they put in and we were able to whittle things down. And when the prices came back in, we were able to knock down, we think we're pushing the numbers that we're pushing. I think Mike has, and Pam have already looked at knocking about $50,000 off just to be safe, but it looks like we're probably going to be able to save about $200,000. Reason I say that is, is because as we're talking about it, our contract last year was $960,000. They asked for a 5% increase this year, which would have pushed, which is in your budget or it should have been, which would have been $1,008,000. And I think that, again, the manager recommended taking $50,000 off of that, making it 958,000. I would anticipate that we'll at least have another $100,000 savings in that, $150,000, just to work the chief and I have done with them to say, hey, we don't think this is right. We think you can do a better for cheaper. So just keeping that in mind, that will change all of the numbers from when I made my presentation to the staff earlier, which was my notes here. So again, we're looking at somewhere around, if you're looking at $958,000 on your paperwork, we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of somewhere around 858 or 800,000, which is $150,000 less than we had last year and $200,000 less than they requested this year.
They were asking for a 5% increase and then...
And a lot of that was based on our numbers increasing some. And again, we do a sliding scale with them, but again, I could understand, I didn't appreciate it, but I could understand why they asked because they didn't get an increase last year. Normally, they look at their consumer price index and they'll base that off of that consumer price index. I wish we could do that, but we can't always do that. And, you know, I guess their mentality was, is that, you know, if they missed a 2.5% last year and then another 2.5%, 3% this year, it would help make up. And I can appreciate that. They're a private company and they have to pay the bills and do this too. But at the end of the day, it's our job to do the most we can with the least we can. And under this economy, we just felt like it was a little high and it was time for us to go out. Service does mean a lot and keeping, keeping folks that had been in our facility, working in our facility does mean a lot. That's worth something. We knew that going into our request for other vendors to look. And we would, we certainly would have taken that into account. Because again, if we would have had to start over with a new vendor, even though they'd have came in a little bit cheaper maybe, we'd have had brand-new folks that would have had to get up to par and there's a learning curve there that costs something. But they were able to come in at a better price than the others. And we had, we've had several meetings with them and feel real good about where we're at with it. All right. Medical, about the same, same way. I mean, we, Southern Health Partners does our medical inmate contract. They're increased this year. And again, we went through a full detail with them when we moved into the new facility. For those of y'all that are new, we had to add a new person and we're actually working healthcare around the clock now. So a lot of that information was put out last year during the budget process. And this year, their request was for an increase to, from 627,000 to 646. So it was $18,000 increase, which was basically the CPI. Seemed to be in line with what they're providing. We do get a few more services, as I've said in the past, from them, such as DNA testing and things like that, that we've been able to work together with. Not changing the numbers from the food a while ago, the overall operations was up 60,000. Again, our overall budget was, let's see, the overall budget with the new estimates would be a decrease of about $175,000 in this budget as opposed to a $25,000 increase. So that will significantly change, just making that correction in the food. That's about it with the jail. Do you have any questions about it? Animal control is even easier. Really, there was, there was only a, it's a lot smaller budget. Food was the only thing that increased for animal control division this year. And again, they provide the food for our canines, our working canines. We did add a canine over the last year as well. So that was one of the reasons for the increase in food. That's not necessarily the food that we feed the animals. We do work with, we get a lot of food donated for the animals that we bring in. Overall, there was $17,000 operations increase for animal control, which was, total animal control budget increase was 16,000. Any questions about animal control? Again, I didn't go over a whole lot because there's not a whole lot in that budget for...
We also added the $48,000 for the Humane Society to take over the facility.
That was with... That was within this.
Is that correct, Erica?
Okay.
Can you kind of would address that a little bit?
I'll talk about it. I didn't have it on my paperwork because I think when we made the presentation to the staff, we had not done it at that point. So, again, I think that forty-eight thousand she's talking about was what, we've had a lot of meetings. I was a little discouraged with the article I saw in the newspaper that made it look like there was a problem with the, with the animal control division, which we run. And then there was very little talk about how our role was in this whole process. Matter of fact, it was not in there at all. And I think we've been out front with these meetings. David Taylor's done a fantastic job of leading the way for the sheriff's office. And we have been the ones out there saying, not because there's a problem, just because we feel like that it's the best for animals and for our citizens, for the folks that, that tend to that, that business to, to, to do that. So, my point in that is, is that we have, I feel like that, that sheriff's office has been the ones that has been leading that charge, not because there were problems, just because it's the right thing to do to take animal control to the next level without increasing a lot of funds. With that being said, there's been a lot of work done towards turning the shelter over to Humane Society, who have currently been working with us to clean the facility and do things to the point that they couldn't do it anymore. Financially, they just couldn't do it anymore. And it may, I, I don't know all the inner workings and it's probably none of my business, but they opened a new shelter themselves. They have continued to, to be a partner with us within the, that facility. But with them taking over this new, the potential of them taking over this, the, the shelter responsibilities, there would be a cleaning need there. And I think they determined that it would take two part-time persons a day for seven days, Mike, is that right? Mike and I talked with them about that, and it, it equated it to forty-eight thousand dollars a year for cleaning. And I think that talking with David Taylor, who's out there every day and runs that operation, that's probably about right. He would take a full-time employee to do it, or you can take two part-timers. And again, trying to get somebody seven days a week's a little bit more difficult on our schedule than it would be when they're rotating part-timers.
On this, the budget summary for the amended FY-12 capital outlay, ninety thousand dollars, what was that last year?
It was replacing, see if I used the right term, the crematory.
One thing, Brad, I didn't realize it sitting here when we were talking about that, that we didn't talk a lot about that article. And even the story, old WBT didn't talk a lot about the work y'all had done. But I really appreciate, I mean, that was two years, the last two years have been talking, it's akin to getting to the goal line and then getting kicked back ten or fifteen yards several times. But I think one of the biggest things that I think that helped push, really kind of jump everything forward is when we realized that in your booking software, you have that, that whole section of that software that is, a whole capability of doing animal control booking and intake, which part of this will be able to get the Humane Society to manage that part of it. And that way, you get, we've got an inventory and it takes some load off your officers to have to.
And I think you'd have to be at some of those meetings, if you think about it. If you go back to two years that we started talking about this, that was when OSSI was fairly new to us. Animal Control Division is out, so they're not co-located here where a lot of the infrastructure for, for those functions for OSSI are at. So, we would have been tasked in IT to do a whole lot to get those functions out there, to get it up to running. And before, we all wanted to spend the money to get that infrastructure done. We wanted to make sure, you know, we don't want to spend the money, get it set up to do that, and then some other entity run that. So, we put it on hold. But, you know, I think the article, again, I don't always take the, the, the news to heart, but it was a little disheartening, I think, to, to the animal control folks because they have been on top of this issue. They have been out front trying to do some of these changes and things that have kind of been put on hold for, for cost-efficient reasons. I think we have a wonderful plan. I do think it will carry animal control to the next layer, to the next level that needs to happen. There have been little change in, in, in that world in the last ten or fifteen years because of money. And this is a way that we can, to me, it's a staff multiplier without near as much cost to the citizens.
Well, one of the things that, you know, been telling this for several, for about a year, is the, the model that's in Polk County where the animal control is separate. They do the enforcement, and the foothills Humane Society does the, you know, runs the shelter. And that's kind of where we're, we have kind of established the groundwork in, in, you know, for that type of model here, you know, even more than, you know, it has been the past, I'm not saying that it hasn't existed, but there's been this kind of, helps tighten things up and kind of formalize things a little bit more with some of the performance measures and things like that we're going to ask for in the shelter operations. So, get y'all, your officers better able then to do what they are supposed to be doing, that's in the animal control side.
There's a very limited number of bed space. We've talked about that a number of times at, at that facility. And now that responsibility switches to, to them. They're aware of it. They know what they have to do. And there's, those challenges will be met by the Humane Society, those folks that are better at communicating with people in that world. And, and, you know, they, they have, every day, they have resources that are out there and available to, to, to try to find those beds where it's a little bit more tasking on us to be able to, we don't have anybody dedicated to, to, to be out there looking and communicating about those. So, I, I really do think that it'll, it'll help us cut down on the, the population that we have, running loose especially.
Brad, are, are you at the point where you're prepared for the ICE program to introduce it to the budget? Or?
I think so.
Okay.
And, and again, I'll be glad that, you know, we talked about it at the retreat. I went through everything, and you know how long it is. And most of it's just giving examples. Most of it's, I, I don't really know how to say it, but I, I'll give you as much information. I've got all the information I had at retreat, but to spare you, we can just hit, we can just kind of hit some of the, I, I think we left it, that, that everybody was fine with the way it was being proposed and understood everything. And you wanted us to go back and, and look at creating a budget and see what the actual budget would look like. And we worked with Pam in doing that. Again, it's, it's a, it's a guess at, at things, but they're telling us that, that we'll have plenty of work. And again, as far as the ICE program goes, they're going to pay for anything they use. What we're trying, what we're betting is, is if you remember, the discussion was, is that we made nine hundred trips. We're making nine hundred-plus trips, not even ICE-related. That's six hundred mental health trips a year, and then another three hundred RIT trips a year that we're going to try to incorporate into this. We'll still do some of it. But if we can incorporate some of that in there, then naturally, what I'm showing you is an opportunity for ICE to pay for that as well. Now, again, I, I will tell you that, naturally, those are intangibles that we don't see. Currently, without us having ICE transportation in place, our officers, as I told you at the retreat, we have, I think that we did a fiscal year of 2010, which was the best statistics that we had at the time in January. And it showed that we had ran over, just for mental health, six hundred and four mental health trips to thirty-seven different hospitals in the state of North Carolina and had driven over seventy thousand miles. And if you do, you just do the simple math of, you know, approximately sixteen dollars an hour per hour driven and, and trying to estimate just the time that you were driving, there was a, there was a sum of money that's in our current budget now to pay for that. Naturally, if we're going to take that, I, I think we got to find a way to shift some of that over there. Because again, ICE is not going to come in and pay for anything they don't use. So, what I would, what I would venture is, is that we will, can work with Pam and say, hey, here's a number that's in our current budget now for fuel and for officers that have been leaving and taking these other trips. And I, I came up with a number, it's about forty-nine thousand dollars. It's in our current budget, not asking for anything over and beyond what we've been using. Just shift some of that from what we've been using over to here, because I want to show at the end of the year exactly what this program's doing and it's paying for itself. If it's not paying for itself, then we'll give it back to them. But at the end of the day, I'm pretty sure that we're going to make some money on it, a little bit of money on it, on top of, assume these nine hundred trips. I think we can do that.
What we can do at this point is, if you're interested in pursuing this program, Erica has the ability. We start off with a budget that's been presented to you, and then we start making adjustments to that budget as you make decisions and go along. And we can put in the number of part-time positions you would need and the cost, along with the revenue associated with that, if you so choose for us to move forward. But the biggest part of this is for the board to approve positions to be added to the budget. So, we can provide you with that information, but wanting to make sure that that's the direction you want us to head in.
As you remember, when we talked at the retreat, it, it's going to take, what I estimated was us trying to hire about sixteen part-time folks. Again, we'll probably pare that down and maybe even use some, some of our detention officers, because their salaries are a little bit less than what our reimbursement would be. They're willing to do that. They got that extra time to do it. We can utilize those individuals. If they go into overtime, that overtime will be paid at that heightened rate by the federal government as well. So, again, we, we would only stand a chance of making money if we use those individuals. But we just need the positions to hire those individuals so we can have them on staff. So, when we do use them, and again, y'all are in control of those positions. And if we hired, you know, it's, it's different than if I was asking you for a full-time employee, because then a full-time employee's going to have benefits. He's going to be expected to work forty hours. Part-timer, if he doesn't work any this month, didn't, didn't use up anything, and he didn't reimburse at any, any rate. So, I think these positions are a little bit easier. And again, I'd like to have a pool of those individuals. That way we, because we'll be working eight hour, eight, our schedule will have eight individuals working per day, plus a supervisor part-time. We'll have, if you remember, there'll be three teams of two going out every day. One team going east of two, picking up. One team going west, within a hundred miles, picking up. And then they'll meet back in Charlotte and meet our Gainesville, Georgia team in Charlotte at one o'clock. And those individuals will make a four hundred and fifty mile run to, to Gainesville and back every day.
I mean, I think from the retreat, the presentation you gave, and, you know, I think it's something that we should pursue. I, I'm comfortable with that. And I know we had extensive discussions then, and I'm still comfortable with it. So, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Well, I think you can come up with the numbers for us to be able to look at.
We can take care of that. It might be premature, but I think I've got one more thing I want to ask you.
All right.
There was a grant, and there was the Cannon Foundation and another place. Was there a position that was needed for that grant to be incorporated in the budget?
Uh-huh. We'll talk about that next. And I think that's it. This one's even better. We have been talking for a number of years about inmate programs, jail inmate programs. And I'm not talking about warm and fuzzies. I'm talking more of practical things, skills training, domestic violence training, alcohol training, or, or training for, for, for folks that have alcohol problems, drug problems.
Kay doesn't need to be in that program.
So, one, and, and we've had some challenges. In the old jail, we didn't have the space. And we had no classroom space. We had no ability to bring volunteers in to do this. The programming was, was established, we had sat down and established that. So, when we moved into our new facility, there was only one challenge. There was two challenges, staffing. And with the way that facility is ran, it makes it a little bit easier for us to, to dedicate staffing in this, to take the service to the inmate, rather than taking the inmate to the service, which would require extra staffing. So, we eliminated that. The only other thing we had was we needed someone to coordinate the program, somebody that we could say, hey, this is your baby. Because there's a lot that goes into that. And to make a long story short is, is that that needed to be a person that's good at programming, that can work with volunteers, set up an orientation. Jody Ramirez has done that. You're familiar with Jody through Project Safe. She stepped to the plate, has just done a fantastic job. She's actually doing the full job of this, and it's, I know it's more than she can handle. Just since January, and I didn't anticipate that she would start this coordinator. I told her that, look, we're putting in for Governor's Crime Commission money. We put in for it last year, didn't get it. So, we, this, this was put on hold. She knew that this was one of my, one of my babies. This is one of the things that I wanted to do before I left, way on down the road, I hope. But it's just one of the things that has been on my list of things to do, and, and, and I, I just think it's very necessary, not to warehouse these individuals, to give them the tools and resources to go out and be better than they were when they came in. And I think there are a number of those folks that we looked at that, that we can do that with. So, I didn't want to come and ask you for the money to do that. It's my program. I felt like that we needed to find a way to try to get that done, and we've just been on hold. Jody stepped to the plate and said, look, I think this Governor's Crime Commission money will go through in the next year or two. If not, I'll, I'll do it. And I said, well, let's not start it and have to drop back and punt. I mean, realize, if we start it, you're going to stick with this. And she said, that was fine. We also, she worked with me to go before the Miriam Hayes Foundation, and they, you know, I don't, I can't say enough about the, the Hayes and Cannon family and how, how they have been, not just to us, but our community. But they granted us a annual, the, the first year, fifty thousand dollars for this coordinator position. They also told us that if the Governor's Crime Commission money came through at a later date, that you could bank that money and use it in it for, for, for a second year or whatnot, which you can't normally do with a grant. So, we feel real comfortable. We have been in the grant process for Governor's Crime Commission, for a one-year grant that would carry this. We feel real good that that's going to go through. We've been working on some second and third layers, which is not, they normally don't have you work on those layers unless you're being highly recommended for it. So, I feel comfortable that we can get that. If so, this coordinator position that we're talking about would have at least two years with the option of being able to go back before both of those boards and get a second year. So, we could have anywhere from, we have fifty thousand dollars now. So, we have one year. And that's what the request today is, is to, for us to, to be able to use the fifty thousand dollars that we received through the, the Hayes Foundation appropriation to go ahead and hire someone to put in Jody's place to take that baby and run with it. And what I'm telling you is, is that I feel real good that we'll be able to bank that fifty thousand in a month or two, when we hear from the Governor's Crime Commission, and we can use theirs and hopefully put in again, and maybe have anywhere from two to four years of, of this program coordinator. By that time, you know, and we'll, we'll bring the numbers back anytime you want. Matter of fact, I'll give you some numbers today. We started in January, and we piloted just our females. And understand, our female population is, is much smaller, fifty compared to two hundred and fifty to three hundred male inmates in our facility. And we piloted the female program in the beginning and then for the first month or two. And then we started another program with our males in February. And now, two months later, three months later, we're full bore with five different programs that are going on in our jail every day of the week. And those programs are, we have a domestic violence program, DSS. I'd like to thank DSS. If you get a chance, say something to them. They have done case management for us, which is very valuable to this program, and done it just, just because they see the, how much it will help the community. There's a Bible study. There's a literacy program in there where we're teaching folks how to read, at least on a seventh grade level and up. And, and there's just all kinds of different things that are going on. And again, these are not warm and fuzzies. These are things that are practical for individuals to, to get out and potentially do something with their life. In April alone, we have already a hundred and sixty-six volunteers in our facility. These are volunteer hours that were in our facility, just in April alone, a hundred and sixty-six. Now, some of them were in there a couple times, but there were a hundred and sixty-six different visits by volunteers in April alone. And they reached nine hundred inmates. And again, some of those inmates were, were volunteering for a second and third class. But they have done surveys. I read all of the surveys. They've done a couple surveys, inmate surveys, and they're wanting more, more, more. And it is just good, very good programs. At some point, I want this coordinator, I would challenge this coordinator to, to start trying to keep up with recidivism. What I'd be interested in at the end of the day is to see and how many of these folks, how often were they coming to our facility per year anyway? And now, has this reduced any of it? The other thing I'd like to see is, is that, you know, I'd like to, to see some follow-up, how many of these folks have gone out and used some of this to their advantage, and this coordinator would be able to do that. We have over eighty approved volunteers now, different volunteers. They have been oriented, and they have to go through a several-hour orientation with our folks. They have to go through a background check. They have to go through anything that we would allow those folks to come in our facility. And so, we're, we're very pleased to say that we have partnered with eighty different individuals in this community to come in and volunteer their time to, to help move these programs forward. All that being said, we're requesting a position for this coordinator that the money is already there for them.
We have the ability to add that position and tag it that it's, that it's tied to We have the ability to add that position and tag it that it's tied to a grant. And then when the grant goes, unfortunately, the position goes with it unless something else is presented. But we do have that capability.
I think it would make sense to, if you've got the funding for it, it'd make, I mean, it would make sense to approve the position. I see he has nodded. So, that would make sense to add that too, then. Anything else that you're going to prompt him on? I'm through.
Did you want any discussion on Mount Pleasant? I don't want to open anything that didn't. But that's the only other file that I had was the Mount Pleasant.
Is that we've run some numbers. We finally got permission from the state, or actually somebody to talk to from the state about the facility. We're running numbers right now. Right now, they're not matching up or paying for itself, but we're still, so we're still going back and looking at some other stuff. We've got some upfront costs just to bring the facility up to where we would want it, and that would be heating and air conditioning, the dormitories and that kind of stuff. So, get past that. And then the other biggest thing, the other big ticket right now is the video visitation to make sure that program's going to work. So, our IT folks are running that down right now. So, that may be another thing that we bring back to you. So, and we will bring you the numbers. If it pays for itself, it may make sense to do it. If it doesn't, then that would be up to you guys as well. But it is 198 beds?
198 beds.
198 beds.
Two things I would want to add to that, too, is this, is, and we've talked about this at length. I've talked with a number of citizens out there that I've not met anybody that says it's not a no-brainer. I understand that it costs money to make this thing run, but I just want you to keep this in the back of your mind. You know we have two pods in our facility now, 96-bed pods, the annex and then the top wing upstairs that the lights are out in them. We talked about this. And at some point, we're going to have to open that. And at that point, when we open that and fill those pods, we will be at full capacity and be looking down the barrel. Again, I don't anticipate that would happen anytime soon, but that is the extent. My point in saying that is, is that this is the future. This is the opportunity to get 200-bed facility for a very minimal price. I know it's the worst time to do it. I understand that. And that's why I've talked to a number of folks out in the community. And I've not met one person that said, hey, it's a no-brainer. You have to do this. At some point, we're going to put 40 employees in those two wings compared to putting 35 down there, which is the operational cost of making that happen. But we can't put that on hold. We can put this on hold for a little while. Just understand that the second issue that I'll bring up is, is that our facility currently is near capacity. I mean, we've got, as I reported to you before, anywhere from 30 to 50 beds that are available. But in a year or two, that could easily go away. And when it goes away, we'll be back in front of you saying, look, we either need to start shipping folks out, or we need to turn the lights on these other facilities. And we'll be at that position to go, I wish we would have. Because I really think that what Mike's talking about, we've talked about it a number of times, unless I've missed something, we're a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix up, to make the accommodations to that facility down there. And as you know, buying 200 beds for a couple hundred thousand dollars, you can't do that anywhere. It's hard to build a house for that anymore, much less 200 beds of a facility that's got 55 acres, 25 buildings on it, and is functional for that facility. It's already accepted in that community. And I just think that it is a, just keep those two things important in your mind because it'll be easy to say, hey, where do we find the money to staff it? But we may be looking down the barrel of doing that down in the short future anyway because we're near capacity in the beds that we have available here. The other beauty of taking the Mount Pleasant prison is, is that it continues to keep the lights out in those two pods, which pushes our full capacity, our maximum capacity way on down the road further. It gives us a lot further down the road to not have to come back and say, hey, we got a bill, or we have to do something different. I just think that it's very, 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 you have to have a vision to be able to get on board with this program. But I'll be glad, I've run a bunch of different numbers. I've looked at a lot of different things, and we've taken into account every cost that could be associated with that as best we could. Again, we are looking to use that facility for this misdemeanor program. Can I sit here and tell you today that they'll send me 190 inmates down there? Probably not. I don't know. But that program's in its infancy, and we offered 30 beds, and we filled them up like that and had to stop the program because we're at full capacity. And we'll keep that full capacity. I can only anticipate if we offered them 50 more beds, that they may fill those 50 beds up. On top of the fact that we could sell those beds to other counties for maybe even $50 a night as opposed to 40. So, I think that we can, I think it will pay for itself.
I'm sure also, I haven't seen them, but how many owners on dog runs out there from that program that the late inmates you had out there? So, that we got that, that's another added thing we have with that, is that...
Yep.
With the animal shelter, have a place to put, house more dogs so you don't have to worry about trying to have that pressure on us.
Yeah. And I don't know the full extent of those programs. I do know that they have ran a K-9, or I wouldn't say K-9, some type of program down there with inmates, interacting inmates with dogs from the shelter. And it's worked with great success, and it does provide that opportunity. Again, there's a lot of different work release programs that we'll be able to do. We open to anything. Those will be sentenced inmates, and as long as we got the ability to work release those individuals, to get some county stuff done, I'll be glad to do it. Any questions about the Mount Pleasant?
No. I think we just need to continue to get more information on that.
I was very pleased that they did, the state did finally figure out exactly who was going to make the decision on all of that. Mike and Pam did work tirelessly, making numerous calls to try to get the right person, and kept running into this guy handles it, and this guy would give one answer. And we finally did track it down to somebody that made a decision, said, no, this is what the statute says. This is what legislature was planning on doing. They gave us a definitive answer. So, now, I think it's up to us to move this thing forward to a point of making a decision, yea or nay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Pam, do we need to do anything else about the Humane Society or that item?
No, that information is included in the budget. I just wanted to point out to you that it is in there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. The next item we have, Jonathan Marshall. This sounds vaguely familiar.
It is. It was an item I brought to you last night. I had explained that in consultation with Mr. Cook, we had felt we needed to reject all those bids. Actually, by our policy and an abundance of caution, I'd asked that the board make a motion to reject all bids for this Cox Mill Elementary School stormwater system.
We didn't do a bid last night, too?
No, we didn't take any action on it last night.
No, you didn't take any action as a board. We just need you to agree to...
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So, we need a motion to reject these, the bids that we have received. Okay. I don't know. I was thinking that we had intended to do that last night, and I apologize. Okay.
All right.
Go ahead. Were they too high or too low?
They were too high, and they were also missing, there was some issues in terms of providing some expertise in it, in experience that they did not include.
So, we just need a motion to reject all bids, and then after that...
We're going, we'll...
You're going to rebid.
We'll rebid it.
Okay. So, I have a motion to reject the bids, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Anything else that you have for tonight?
A minute.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. In that case, we will recess this meeting until Thursday, May the 24th, beginning at 4:00. Again, may I have a motion to recess? Second, all in favor say aye.